Good evening. I'd like to bring the November eighteenth meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mrs. Kuduski?
Here.
Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Holger?
Here. Mrs. Kuduski, could we have the invocation and pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening, the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in clarity, charity, and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with the great and just.
We'll be hearing reports from our student representatives, Abby Marolla and Katie Receiver. Ladies?
On October ninth, students at the kindergarten academy attended the annual fire prevention assembly hosted by local fire stations. Students dressed in harvest attire for their harvest day celebration on October twenty-seventh. October was bullying awareness and prevention month, and on the sixteenth, students participated in positive behavior intervention support assembly. Mr. Sanctus would like to thank all who participated in the fall fundraiser. The money will support Earth Day, May Fair, and classroom materials.
At Glenalden School, on October first, it was Picture Day. Our book fair theme for this year was Monster Mash. Students and parents purchased books. On October twenty-first, fourth grade went to Pete's Purdue's. On October twenty-third, third grade went to John Heinz. Trunk or Treat was held on October twenty-fifth. October twenty-sixth, seventh grade went to the movies to see Everest, and the fifth grade went to John Heinz. The eighth grade visited the National Constitution Center on October thirtieth.
Prospect Park's PBS team organized a Pink Spirit Day, supporting breast cancer awareness. Many students participated in the bullying awareness walk and the Don't Be a Monster Assembly. The annual Halloween parade was held with games and snacks.
At Norwood School, Veterans Day was celebrated on November eleventh. Elementary students wrote letters to our veterans. Our middle school marching band performed in the Veterans Day Parade in media. The seventh grade visited the World War II exhibit at Glenalden School. Our elementary students continued to show core values and were awarded the A Jeopardy Assembly on October thirtieth. Norwood School won the Interro School District two thousand fifteen food fight. With the support of the entire school, they collected over four thousand canned food items that were donated to local charities. Thank you to all that help and support to win the Golden Macaroni Trophy.
Thank you to Ms. Neese for organizing Tinnicum's first book fair of the year opened this week. November twentieth, the annual Turkey Bowl will be held at Tinnicum. Over the past two months, Tinnicum teachers have been participating in a professional development book study led by second grade teacher Tracy Costa.
At the high school, we started homecoming out with a pep rally on Friday, October sixteen. The excitement and school spirit was fabulous. The parade down to the South Ave complex started here at the high school at six-thirty. The homecoming court and floats headed down to the field where they were going to be judged. The senior class won first prize. On October seventeenth, the dance court was announced again. Congratulations to Caleb Remshard as homecoming queen and Michael DeMarco as homecoming king. Everyone had a wonderful time. On October twenty-third, the German students arrived at Interboro. Later in our week, the students took the German students to on a tour of Lancaster to experience some of the Amish traditions and then headed to Shady Maple. Finally, on October twenty-eighth was the annual Powderpuff Game. Seniors won six-year our MVP with Stephanie Dina Minikis. This has concluded our report.
Thank you, ladies. You're excused after the committee reports. Mrs. Riley?
Thank you, Mrs. Holger. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Johnston to please come up for the student recognition. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not going to use the microphone. I think you should all be able to hear me. It is my privilege this evening to recognize our students here who have earned the right to have their names listed on the banners you see on the wall here. When you walk into our building, you'll see three banners that are outside, which students in the past have received the right with recognition from our AP Scholars to AP Scholars with Honors and then to AP Scholars with Distinction. That is quite a feat. I want to read to you how these students earned this right for their names to be posted up here. An AP Scholar is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on more on three or more of the AP exams. An AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two-five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And an AP Scholar with Distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point three point five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams taken. That is an incredible feat. It is my privilege to acknowledge the students tonight here who have made it to these particular banners. When I call your name, I want you to come up and I'm going to give you a certificate and you can see your name is on the banner there. These banners will then be displayed permanently out in our hallways for folks to see. Will Amy Booker? Is Andrew here? Nicholas Franz? Jacob Manser? Is Jacob here? Megan McCarthy? Valerie Perry? Amy Hadell? Alex Klesnick? And Amber Hadell? Congratulations.
Hi, my name's Tina Moore and I'm one of the advisors of the National Honor Society and it's our privilege tonight to induct some of our new incoming officers for the year. So, the installation of any group of officers is an important and serious occasion. The students of the National Honor Society have indicated their faith in these trusted officers to serve for the coming year. The National Honor Society is founded upon the principles of leadership, service, and character. In all their undertakings, may they always keep in mind these guiding principles. Newly elected officers, please step forward as I call your name. President, Mr. Eric Klesnick. Vice President, Ms. Megan McCarthy. Treasurer, Ms. Amy Hadell. Secretary, Ms. Amber Hadell. And historian, Ms. Marissa Hughes. New officers, in accepting these offices, you've indicated your willingness to give the best in time and effort to carry out the principles of the National Honor Society. Yours is a grave responsibility as well as a privilege. The world today has never before, as never before, needs faithful and efficient leaders and your school's looking to you to lead its students. With this in view, do you pledge your best efforts in these offices you now accept? If so, answer, please answer "we do." Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of the Interboro Board of School Directors and Administrators, it gives me great pleasure to recognize Carollette Majin, Mary Ann Veterini, and Sue Ernest for their thirty years of service to the Interboro School District. It's been an honor getting to know each of these teachers over the last twenty years and all three are true professionals. They are well-respected by their colleagues, administrators, students, staff, and parents. They have a passion for teaching and it shows each and every day in their classrooms. As I call up our teachers, please give them a round of applause. Carolette Majin. Mary Ann Veterini. Unfortunately, Sue Ernest was not able to make it this evening, but I think she deserves a well, a round of applause as well. Also this evening, the district would like to recognize school board directors Kathy Holger, Brian Razzie, Anne Kuduski, and Phyllis Floyd for their many years of service to the Interboro School District. Each of these directors have volunteered their personal time preparing for and attending district meetings, attending school and sporting events, workshops, conferences, participation in various committees outside of the district, just to name a few. They exemplify leadership and commitment and I can't thank them enough for their contributions. Their efforts reflect their dedication to district, to the district, ensuring that our children are provided the opportunity to gain knowledge through the best education possible. On behalf of the board and the administration, please accept this token of appreciation and we wish you the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. I'd like to also extend my congratulations to the AP Scholars, our National Honor Society officers, and especially to our teachers for your service. Well done. Thank you. We can go on to public comments. Mrs. Kuduski?
Yes, first up, Dan McGrath.
I'm going to kind of piggyback off of Superintendent Riley here. First of all, Dan McGrath, I'm president of the Interboro Education Association, also class of nineteen ninety-five. Tonight's the last night for some of you board members in your elected positions. I just wanted to personally thank you, but more importantly, thank you on behalf of our three hundred-plus members for bringing much-needed stability to the district. I know some of you are happy to go, whereas others would have liked to serve another term. Regardless, you are leaving the district in a better place than it was four years ago. The IEA truly appreciates the personal sacrifices each and every one of you have made in order to govern our district. Many times, decisions are made in DC or Harrisburg and you folks are left with implementing unpopular, often expensive mandates. Your work is commendable and for that, the IEA wishes you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Mrs. Kuduski?
Bridie Scanlon?
Hello, my name is Bridie Scanlon from Glenalden and I'm the IEPA president. To the Interboro School District Board of Directors, the lifeblood of any school district is the personnel who work there. From the superintendent to the custodial staff, everyone is important to the district's overall well-being. No one group or person is more important. The district stands and falls on its people. However, everyone who has worked in a school or had children attending school acknowledges that a school, any school, couldn't function efficiently without its support personnel, including administrative assistants, school secretaries, guidance secretaries, nurses secretaries, college and career secretaries, business office personnel, library assistants, and others. The Interboro School District, efficient operation is due largely to these unsung, unsupported, unnoticed employees who had been working without a contract for almost two years. It is hard to believe that this is true, but it is. The very people who support and nurture the students are being dismissed, their contributions disregarded. Almost two years have passed since the Interboro Education Personnel Association contract expired. During this time, the IEPA has tried to get the school board to resolve the matter. A series of negotiation sessions have failed to produce an agreement. At this point, the school board refuses to negotiate a full offer on several key points, which would, in effect, resolve all outstanding issues and produce an agreement. Their silence is deafening. The IEPA majority are district residents and taxpayers who feel disrespected and dismissed. They're loyal to their home district, the school in which their children have been educated, is being tested severely. Something must be done now. It is not the IEPA intent to negotiate in public. However, Interboro taxpayers need to know about the situation. IEPA urges them to contact their respective board members to get the job done. Respectfully submitted on behalf of the Interboro Education Personnel Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. Your remarks about everyone being important, this board agrees one hundred percent. We appreciate the contributions of all of our employees. We recognize and realize how important the secretaries are to the efficient running of the building. We are more than happy and willing to negotiate. We have been negotiating. My last report, as I spoke to our attorney, was that your group refused to meet us with us. We would like for you to come back to the table. We would like to continue our talks. It is not our intention to stall. It is our intention to resolve this in the best interest of the district and our employees. So, I do ask that your group comes back to the table. Thank you.
Mrs. Holger, I want to correct you on one thing. The reason why we're not negotiating is because we are, we have thirty-six people in our group and the offer you gave us did not come back with a full offer. We need to be able to negotiate with all of our members.
We won't be able to negotiate at all if we're not talking. So, I would hope that you would come back to the table so we can begin to talk again.
Like I said, we're waiting for a full offer.
Okay. Mrs. Kuduski?
Donna Franz?
Good evening. My name is Donna Franz and I reside in Glenalden. I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank my school board representative, Mrs. Anne Kuduski, for her eight-plus years on the Interboro School Board and involvement in the community. Through Anne, I have learned that honesty, integrity, and transparency are good attributes for a school board member to have. Although it was not an easy road for Anne to be elected her last time around, she pushed through with determination and perseverance and for that, I admire her and I am grateful for her service. Anne, I wish you, Jim, Allison, and Jessica a lifetime of happiness and good health. I would also like to take this time to thank school board representative, Mrs. Phyllis Floyd, for your twelve years of service to the Interboro School Board and community. When I started being an involved, engaged parent several years ago, it was no secret that Mrs. Floyd and I did not see eye to eye. As a matter of fact, we couldn't stand each other. However, over the years in getting to know her, I have grown to respect Mrs. Floyd for her hard work and dedication to this district. From my conversations and observations of Mrs. Floyd, I have learned that her passion for our community is immeasurable. For this, I will always be thankful to her. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Chaz Willis and his family for his competitive run and hard work for Mrs. Kuduski's open seat. A big thank you to the community members who supported Mr. Willis in his run. Although he did not win, there were voters who came out of the work to support him. The voter turnout was impressive. Also, I hope that the Interboro School Board and the Interboro Secretaries Union can come to a reasonable agreement for the secretaries' contract in the very near future. These individuals play an important role to make sure that the daily, day-to-day business of our district flows smoothly. They are the ones the community has first interaction with when they, when they contact or enter any of the many buildings in our district. I personally have always been treated with the utmost respect from these individuals. They always have known the answer to any of my many questions. Congratulations and good luck to the new board members that will be coming onboard December the eighth. It is my hope that the board can continue to work together for the good of our district, children, and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Franz.
Zerdy Dobie?
Zerdy Dobie, Tinnicum. To my representative, Mr. Eckert, consider this your notification from me to get this contract with the secretaries moving again. The board recognition. I'm going to also thank Mrs. Kuduski for her years of service and her dedication to the school district. I'm going to thank Mrs. Floyd also. And Mrs. Holger, also I thank you, as well as Mr. Razzie. That being said, there also has to be some recognition of what I consider your failures. And I'm going to mention just the one with regards to the airport settlement agreement and the loss of eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, more than that, every single year, which every single one of you, those people mentioned, plus the remaining board directors, voted for. Now, that loss, you made up by taxing the people of the Interboro School District. More than eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Now, four hundred thousand dollars went to Tinnicum Township. Now, they are not interested in giving that money back and you made no effort to try to recover that money. So, every year from now on, for the next twenty years, that eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars will be an added and hidden tax on the Interboro School District taxpayers. And your refusal to do that is one thing that I will not give you, I'll give you credit for, but it's to your shame. So, with that, I just want to reference one thing that happened because the election just happened. This is the flyer that was given or mailed out from the Delaware County Council and in it, it states their position on taxes, saying, "No tax increases in both Delaware Counties twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen budgets," even as Interboro School District continued to raise taxes. Now, they don't have the Interboro School District, they just have school, local school districts raised taxes. And you gave them that money that you shouldn't have done and hopefully, the next board will try to redress this loss of money for the education of the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobie. Can we move to motion five point one, please?
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on October twenty-one, twenty fifteen be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on motion five point one? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. May we have our solicitor's report? Mrs. Sereni?
Thank you, Madam President. This past month, our firm has been consulting with the district on board reorganization, on custody issues, policy review, and also on special education student issues.
Thank you. Motion seven point one, please.
Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending October thirty-one, twenty fifteen be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of three million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars seventy-six cents be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Correspondents?
No, Mrs. Holger.
Thank you. We'll move to the committee reports. I will start with the financial, the finance meeting. We are, have already prepared for the budget. I spoke about it last month, the failure of Harrisburg to pass a budget. So, we are in a position, we're certainly hearing that a deal may be, at first it was Thanksgiving, now maybe it's Christmas. So, when we are, when we are forced to, we'll use our line of credit and not before. So, we are prepared for that. Our finance meeting was dominated, especially at the work session concerning the audit report. The audit is a firm that, an auditing firm that we hire to look at our books independently. It is not a state audit. It is our own yearly audit. The audit that we received had a finding and actually had two findings, one led to the other. It was a procedural matter. We had purchased some buses and also a data station for technology and it should have been posted as a capital lease and we used an operating lease entry for it. So, the auditors corrected that and in the future, Interboro then will adhere to that recommendation. Other than that, the audit was fine. That concludes my report and we'll go to Mr. Eckert for GBO.
Thank you. There was only one agenda item for the month of November for the GBO. It concerned a change order for the kindergarten academy security.
Can we move to motion 5.1, please?
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Inner Borough Board of School Directors held on October 21, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on motion 5.1? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May we have our solicitor's report? Mrs. Serini?
Thank you, Madam President. This past month, our firm has been consulting with the district on board reorganization, on custody issues, policy review, and also on special education student issues.
Thank you. Motion 7.1, please.
Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending October 31, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $3,967,181.76 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Correspondence?
No, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you. We'll move to the committee reports. I will start with the financial, the finance meeting. We are, have already prepared for the budget. I spoke about it last month, the failure of Harrisburg to pass a budget. So we are in a position, we're certainly hearing that a deal may be, at first it was Thanksgiving, now maybe it's Christmas. So when we are, when we are forced to, we'll use our line of credit and not before. So we are prepared for that. Our finance meeting was dominated, especially at the work session concerning the audit report. The audit is a firm that, an auditing firm that we hire to look at our books independently. It is not a state audit, it is our own yearly audit. The audit that we received had a finding, and actually had two findings, one led to the other. It was a procedural matter. We had purchased some buses and also a data station for technology, and it should have been posted as a capital lease, and we used an operating lease entry for it. So the auditors corrected that, and in the future, Inner Borough then will adhere to that recommendation. Other than that, the audit was fine. That concludes my report, and we'll go to Mr. Eckert for GBO.
Thank you. There was only one agenda item for the month of November for the GBO. It concerned a change order for the kindergarten academy security entrance. It is an agenda item for $10,000 to add another window as you come in there and make sure that it is secure. Thank you. There will be no GBO in December.
Thanks for reminding me, Mr. Eckert. There are no committee members or Inner Borough School Board of Directors committee members in December. They resume in January. The legislative update, Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, as mentioned, we're still at an impasse with the budget, and a lot is going on in Harrisburg, back and forth, and a lot of ideas and proposals, but not hitting the target. I was sent an email in regards to Senate Bill 880, which would delay the Keystone Exam graduation requirement for two years and establish a panel to explore alternatives in the meantime, and will most likely be running in the House tomorrow. So we are urging people to call their state representatives tonight, tomorrow, text, email, and ask them to please support this bill because it has to be reviewed. I do have the Senate bill, a copy of what's being proposed, and it spells out in detail exactly what they want to do in regards to the Keystone Exams. I would appreciate it if Mrs. Riley would please have this put on the legislative site. Disappointed because other reports I have given and information I have given and Mrs. Riley has received has not been put on that website for months. And this is important because I've been talking about advocacy month after month after month. And the only way we're going to get something done in Harrisburg, or even Washington for that matter, is to be in contact with our legislators. They don't, they don't react or respond to the board as much as what they would to the people that put them in office. So if this can be put, as well as a couple of other things that I'll be forwarding to her on the website so that people could go and have a better idea in detail what's going on, and there's also a list of who you would contact, they have to hear from us. I also heard from the National School Board Association, and, I'm sorry. I got this before I came to the meeting. The House/Senate Conference Committee for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the ESEA, reauthorization will meet, or they met today, and 10 o'clock Thursday, tomorrow, there will be a live webcast of the meeting. In addition to NSBA staff, will attend the conference committee deliberations. This is also a very important thing. This pertains to No Child Left Behind, and how that also affects us because the states have to abide by, in our case, in Pennsylvania, the PSSAs. So it has the list of the different representatives that'll be sitting in on this committee. So that's another aspect of advocating and contacting and letting them know we need changes, you know? The political arena should not be mandating and dictating to the educational world when in fact, we, the people, the parents, the educators, the administrators, the school board, have a better hands-on of what our kids need or should be doing. And they're just passing these bills, and then we have to live with it. And then a few years later, it's whoops, we gotta fix that because it's not working because they didn't think it through and they didn't come to the local districts throughout the state or throughout the nation to get better input. So with that said, please become an advocate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Evans?
Yes, we did have a meeting of the Delaware County Community College Liaison Committee two weeks ago, along with a board appreciation dinner, which is a good opportunity for us to network with other school directors throughout the county. Some of the things brought up in the meeting immediately following was there's a 4% increase in our contribution towards tuition. They're citing reduced enrollment numbers, as well as increased operating costs and some capital expenditures. We also talked about the dual enrollment numbers. Dual enrollment numbers continue to increase, and it's now reaching down into the 10th grade. So 10th grade students are eligible to take classes at the community college. We also discussed the value of dual enrollment and a follow-on two-year program at the community college prior to following up with a four-year institution. There's several opportunities for considerable savings, and they cited Drexel and Widener. A student who dual-enrolls in their senior year and then also takes two years of core courses at Delaware County Community College can save upwards at Widener, upwards of $10,000 off their overall tuition payment. With a school like Drexel, if they took dual enrollment and a follow-on program, two-year program at community college, and then completed their degree at Drexel, they can save as much as $68,000. That's before it's rolled into loan costs with interest and everything else. So it's considerable savings and it's well worth looking at. It's a great opportunity and a great resource for a lot of students. They also pointed out two scenarios, or two students they cited who not only took dual enrollment, well, took dual enrollment and online and summer courses, and when they graduated in their senior year of high school, they graduated with an associate's degree. So there's significant opportunities to be had there, and I really suggest you look into it. If you need any more information, you can certainly contact me. They also continue to grow their STEM initiative. They're expanding their online enrollment program. They currently have at least four courses available, and that's pretty much it. Like I said, take advantage of it, get a look at the campus, get a look at the resources available, and see if it's something that would meet your students' needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Harris?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Good to see everyone. Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on November 11th. The 11th was a busy month. Watch this. The DCI played a significant role in planning and coordination of the 56th Annual Veterans' Day Parade held in media on November 11th. The monthly legislation meeting was held on November 11th. It was just a busy day. I don't know what was going on there. The bulk of the discussion centered around budget impasse and the backing of the referendum, SB 909. American Education Week is being observed from November 16th through the 22nd. The purpose of this week is to celebrate the importance of public education. November 12th, two finalists for the position of Delaware District Director of Information and Technology were interviewed. The final candidate has been selected and are in the process of extending the job offer. The DCIU Board of Directors passed a board resolution to release of federal pass-through funds in Pennsylvania at its November 4th meeting. On November 4th, the early head start classrooms opened up at the Yaden Regional Center. On October 17th, Wawa sponsored a walk for autism hosted by the Rocky Run YMCA, and the DCIU ELL teachers are busy collecting food for the annual turkey drive. And as always, for more information and happenings, go to www.dciu.org or contact me directly. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Can we move on to motion 10, Mrs. Kuduski?
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page two, ending on page four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. 10.9 regret to accept the following retirements. Sue Johnson, I just wanted to mention that I've known her the whole time she worked here, and she is a good person, a good secretary, and she's going to be missed a lot. And I wish her well in her new endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. And that goes for both of our retirees. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Motion 11, please, Mr. Kuduski?
Motion that the following items from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction be approved as listed, beginning on page four, ending on page five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Motion 12?
Motion that the following items from the Office of Special Education and Pupil Services be approved as listed, beginning on page five, ending on page six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Motion 13, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Facilities be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This was mentioned in Mr. Eckert's report. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Evans?
Just a very brief comment. This is another stroke, I think, towards the safety of our students, especially in light of recent world events. We can't do too much, we can never do too much to secure our facilities, and this is another step in doing that, and it's cheap insurance to help keep unwanted's out of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Comment?
Mrs. Floyd?
This particular change order is for an addition of a transaction window. It really is more for the safety and protection of our tax collector or the people that work behind that desk. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Motion 14?
Motion that the following items from the Office of Technology be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Motion 15, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Finance be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Motion 16, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached resolution asking that the federal pass-through funds, which help to meet the educational needs of students who are economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and who have disabilities, be taken out of the negotiating process and released to the school districts immediately while the negotiations continue on the budget. We believe these funds are allocated by a federally mandated formula that cannot be modified by state-level budget negotiations, and withholding this funding is unacceptable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Just as a means of explanation, the local school districts, the IUs, we have, the federal government gives us money every year for certain programs, and when they call them pass-through funds, those funds are sent to the state, and then the state in turn distributes them to the school districts. Because of the budget problems in Harrisburg, we have not received our federal money, and actually, it should not be part of the negotiation of the budget. So this motion is to ask for those funds to be sent through to our district and to all districts in Pennsylvania. Any other questions or comments about?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Harris?
This is the same exact thing that I was referring to in my report, that they're holding up the money from the DCIU, as Mrs. Hager also stated. This is a bigger issue than what everybody might realize.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Any old business? For new business, we'll begin with the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. I would like to congratulate our high school LifeLink class for their generous donation of $1,700 to Children's Hospital. You may have seen the article in the Daily Times. They raised the money through pretzel sales. I would like to thank the Save Our Shawna Memory Fundraising Group, who assisted the LifeLink class to raise the money. Shawna Osowski was an Inner Borough student who passed away in her eighth-grade year at Prospect Park School. So great job by our LifeLink students. A friendly reminder to all of our parents that all students in grades K to eight are off November 23rd, 24th, 25th due to parent-teacher conferences. I hope that all of our parents get out there to meet with teachers, learn about their students' progress. I know the teachers are looking forward to having an opportunity to sit and meet with all of you. The high school is in session with an 11:20 dismissal on Wednesday, November 25th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. I would also like to congratulate Sue Johnson, our information specialist at the administration building, who will be retiring from the district after 11 and a half years of service. On behalf of the board and the administrative team, I wish her well in her retirement. And finally, Thanksgiving is upon us, and that means a football game between Ridley and Inner Borough, taking place on Thanksgiving Day at Ridley High School, beginning at 10:30. You can check out the website for some additional information. We will be offering a shuttle service from the parking lot where the buses are at the high school, beginning at 8:30, to and from Ridley for the majority of the morning. So I hope to see everyone there. I'm looking forward to it, and I would like to thank Jay Mitch and the Tinnicum students for the wonderful artwork that's out in front of the stage tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. For board members' comments, I'm going to begin. This is my last meeting. It has been a pleasure to serve the district, the residents of Norwood. I want to sincerely thank my fellow board members for their support the last few years. We have worked very well together. We've accomplished quite a bit. I want to thank Mr. Razzie, who has been a terrific vice president to me in these last two years. Congratulations, my friend, Ms. Kuduski, who has also served wonderfully well. We began sitting at the table together, and we're ending like that. So thank everybody for their support, my fellow board members. And Mrs. Riley, who has been a fabulous choice for this district. She's done a terrific job. Our administrators, our teachers, all of our personnel are very important to us, and we understand how important they are for everybody to function well for our district and to provide the best education for our children. Ms. Kuduski?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Well, when I was approached a little over eight years ago to fill a vacant seat on the board, to be appointed, seemed like a good idea at the time. What can I say? Now, a little over eight years later, it was a hard decision, but I am ready for the next chapter and maybe having a little extra time. My husband and I are pretty much empty nesters now, so get to spend a little bit more time at home. But I'd like to thank everybody that goes out to my Glen Olden residents who voted for me, my husband, thanks for the support, even though he's out there chuckling, and all the staff within the school district, my fellow board members, and anybody else who's supported me over the years. I wish, I said family. Anyway, fellow board members who are done after tonight, good luck with your free time, have fun. The board members who are staying behind, stay strong and continue the good works that we've managed over the last years. The new board members coming on, welcome, and play nice.
Thank you. Mr. Razzie?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. I want to thank all of my colleagues who supported me and the district during my tenure at Inner Borough School Board. Mr. Eckert, Mrs. Kuduski, Mrs. Hager, Mr. Evans, you were all able to put our past differences aside and extended an olive branch to get this board working together. To Mrs. Hager especially, thank you for your leadership, advice, dedication, and friendship. Your work ethic set the tone for all of us, and it has been an absolute pleasure to serve as your vice president. To the faculty and staff, thank you for everything that you do. I choose to send my son to public school and the job that all of you do, making this such a great school district, validate that decision. Good luck to all my fellow board members and all of their endeavors. Good luck to all the new board members that will join the board next month, and especially good luck to our superintendent, Mrs. Riley, who has served this board very well over the last few years, and I think it's one of our greatest accomplishments in hiring you. the last few years, and I think it's one of our greatest accomplishments in hiring you.
Thank you. Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. I want to extend my thanks to all the people that have sent me thank-you cards, emails, text messages, stopped me on the street. Their words were very kind, very supportive. Mrs. France for the flowers and the kind words you gave. The fact of the matter is that unlike my other colleagues that are leaving, I'm not going to say goodbye, because I'm not going anywhere. I intend, like I did 20 years prior to getting on this board, to continue to come to the committee meetings and the board meetings. I talk about advocacy? Well, that's how I started out, I guess, before I decided to get on the board. I tried to advocate for the employees, the support personnel especially, since I was once one of them, and the students, especially the students, but everyone, the district in general. It's very nostalgic for me, because I graduated, my husband and I graduated from here, my son and daughter graduated from here, and I now have grandchildren that are coming through here. So, I had had and have a vested interest in what goes on here at Inner Borough. So, I'm not going to go anywhere, and if anybody needs my help, if you want my help, I'm here to give it. So, I'm not going to say goodbye. I'm going to say, "See you over there." And there's a lot more I can say, but I'm going to go out with dignity and professionalism. And just a word of advice to the new board members? Blind faith will get you in trouble. Ask a lot of questions. People don't like it, but that's how you get accountability. You won't learn unless you ask the question. So, therefore, I strongly recommend, stay strong, ask questions, and make everybody accountable. So, with that, good luck, and I'll see you over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Any other board members?
Mrs. Hager?
Yes, Mr. Eckert?
Well, I would like to congratulate the scholars, the National Honor Society, and the 30 years of service, and also the retirees as well. But most of all, I would like to thank the outgoing board members for their time and their service. Each of you brought your own special personality, and that was very, sometimes meetings were long, but we did get a lot of work done, and it was an awful lot of time that you guys all put in together, and I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Any other board members? Hearing none. On Tuesday, December 8th, 2015, a board reorganization meeting will be held at 6:00 PM in the Kindergarten Academy Multipurpose Room. Next work session of the Inner Borough Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, December 14th, 2015, at 6:30 PM. The next regular monthly public meeting of the Inner Borough Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, December 16th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.[1792.74] [applause]